I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Bronxville Board of Trustees for June 10, 2024, and ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sovereign public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I think this is the most people we've ever had at a meeting.
That was the best pledge of allegiance we've ever had.
Yes, it was. I can speak, I know I can speak for my colleagues, that this is truly our favorite night to have all of you here in such a celebratory spirit. And we are so supportive of our police department. We love our department, and we know we have the best department in Westchester, so. And it's just wonderful for us to have the chance to recognize your achievements, welcome new officers, and say a big collective thank you for what you do for us and for the residents every day. We are so appreciative. So with that, I turn it over to our Police Chief, Chris Satrielli.
Chris.
Clap till you hear what I have to say. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. It's an assumption that the crowd is here for our police services. I know that the sanitary sewer repair on Pondfield Road probably going to get a lot of public comment, so maybe it's a mixed crowd. Before I introduce Lieutenant Nicholas DeYoung, who will handle the ceremonies for this evening, there are four positions where swearing in new officers tonight. And those positions are a direct result of this board's support for law enforcement and public safety in the Village of Bronxville. While many police departments were defunding and reducing staff and reducing resources, two consecutive budgets, this board added two police officers each budget for a total of four to bring our complement from 21 to 25. That's a testament to all of you sitting up there and your commitment to public safety, your commitment to giving my team the resources necessary to keep Bronxville a safe community and a vibrant community. So Trustee Fredericks, Trustee Knapp, Mayor Marvin, Deputy Mayor Underhill, Trustee Barrens, Jim, you don't get a vote, but I know you're back there. I know you're back there pushing my agenda all the time, so we would like to thank you for your support of law enforcement in the Village of Bronxville. And board, the new members and older members have been very busy. As everyone knows, the village is changing. We never would have envisioned a time where we had outdoor dining and we had 200 extra seats of people in restaurants and deliveries and Uber Eats and Lyft and DoorDash, and that created challenges for us, as you have seen and I have seen from complaints and emails. The biggest challenge has been scooters being operated by these delivery drivers. It's a delicate balance. They're working and providing a service for our residents. They're helping our merchants in increasing their business. However, many of them were operating with no motorcycle license, no registration and no insurance. We saw the impact on the business district. We saw the impact in the volume of traffic in the business district. So we took an overtime initiative and put officers out to make sure that these motorcycles and mopeds were operating within the laws of the state of New York. We pulled over many honorable people driving and delivering for our residents and residents outside the village. We also impounded more than 30 mopeds that would be driven in an illegal manner and unsafe manner. We'll continue that initiative. We encourage those hardworking men and women who are driving for Uber Eats and DoorDash to continue to come to the village and do your business, but make sure you have the proper credentials and your motor vehicle is registered and insured. So following the moped initiative, we're currently in a double yellow line enforcement initiative. Now, those officers who are going to swear in from New York City are sitting here saying, I left homicides and robberies and rapes and doing mopeds and double yellow lines, so probably should have sworn in first, but. It's another issue that has been plaguing the village for a very long period of time. As Jim likes to say, we don't have a parking problem, we have a walking problem. There's plenty of parking in our Kensington garage. There's plenty of parking in our garden Craft Avenue lots, but people like to park right in front of the store where they're shopping, and oftentimes they cross the W L line to try and enter our diagonal spot. It's dangerous. It causes traffic issues, so we're beginning that initiative now to enforce and write those tickets also on an overtime basis. So we've been very busy with new staff. We've also been very busy within the village, trying to maintain the high quality of life that residents, merchants, and visitors expect and deserve. So without further ado, I'd like Lieutenant Nicholas DeYoung to come up and begin the ceremonies for the evening. Thank you, Chief, and thank you everybody for coming out today. It's a great, great day for everybody here getting some more in, excuse me, and officers receiving awards. The board in their capacity as Police Commissioner, Board of Police Commissioners, will swear in all of our new hires and promotions today. So we'll start with Officer Anthony Franchiati and Commissioner Fredericks.
I'll speak loudly, and I'm not going to do this with a microphone behind the podium. Police Officer Anthony Franchiati grew up and currently resides in Eastchester. Officer Franchiati began his police career with the City of Mount Vernon Police Department in December of 2021, and transferred to Bronxville's Police Department in July of 2023. Prior to beginning his law enforcement service, Officer Franchiati worked for the Village of Bronxville Department of Public Works. As a native son of Eastchester, we all welcome him back home to Bronxville in your new role. Officer Franchiati, would you raise your right hand, please? I, Anthony Franchiati.
I, Anthony Franchiati.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Police Officer.
The duty of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Bronxville Police Department. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, next Officer Dimitri Gallard and Deputy Mayor Underhill.
About six weeks ago, there was a 911 call. My mom was in distress, and my mom passed away. And the guy, there were two people, there was Martin's not here, three people showed up, but I showed up, my mom had just passed away, so this bond isn't going anywhere. That means a lot when you're about community, when you have a situation like that, you have people that you've known for years, known for months, come up that you, that really creates really, really deep roots, and that's when everything really comes off. So, thank you again. So, Police Officer Dimitri Gallard grew up in Brooklyn, perched in his normal shell as a school friend, the new girlfriend of one of the kids of the mayor. Dimitri graduated from Harvard College with a degree in biochemistry. Everyone with a degree in biochemistry raised. And is currently working towards a degree in applied psychology from SUNY. Very, very impressive. You began your police career with the City of New York Police Department in October of 2018, and transferred to Bronxville in March of this year. We are incredibly thrilled to have you here. You are, we have this, if you know, great team, and you're making that look greater. Okay, please raise your right hand. Officer Dimitri Gallard.
Officer Dimitri Gallard.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
Of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Bronxville Police Department.
For the Bronxville Police Department.
According to the best of my ability.
Next would be Police Officer Brandon Serrano and Commissioner Knapp.
Police Officer Brandon Serrano grew up and currently lives in New York City. Officer Serrano graduated from St. John's University and bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Officer Serrano began his police career with the City of New York Police Department in November of 2020, and Officer Serrano transferred to the Bronxville Police Department in March of this year. Do you have family, friends here? Oh, great. Great addition to our department. All right, please raise your right hand, Detective. I.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of the Office of Police Officer. For the Bronxville Police Department. According to the best of my ability.
Next up, we have Police Officer Fadi Kader and. Just want to point out that normally we try to have all of our officers in dress uniforms, but he is very new and we are unable to get uniforms. Supply chain issues.
I'm not sure we're going to get him yet.
Well, Fadi came to us in June, came from NYPD, where you've been since 2020, born, raised, and still live in Yonkers, graduate of Manhattan College with a degree in finance. If you're white, ignore it.
Yes, you do.
Okay. Well, you know, I can have you come up in a minute, and you also speak fluent Arabic.
Yes.
So you brought the whole package to us. Thank you, thank you. And I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I, Fadi Kader.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Police Officer.
The duties of the Office of Police Officer.
For the Bronxville Police Department.
For the Bronxville Police Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. He's got a fan club, I think. Pretty nice. Congratulations.
And now we're going to move on to our promotions to the rank of Sergeant, starting off with Detective Cheryl Jeros. Detective Jeros has a special promotion for us, so she gets Mayor Marvin, Commissioner Barrens, and Commissioner Knapp.
We've got a little girl power going here. Yeah. Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Detective Cheryl Jeros began her law enforcement career at the City of Mount Vernon Police Department in January of 2006. Detective Jeros transferred to the Bronxville Police Department in April of 2013. And since then has served as patrol officer and detective. Detective Jeros has trained as a youth officer, community policing officer, school resource officer, crime scene investigator, and in addition to all that, is the creator of the Bronxville Police Department annual report. Detective Jeros resides in Eastchester with her husband Alexander and her children, Ally and Axel.
Come on up. I just want to say the reason the three of us are down here is you're the first female sergeant in the history of Bronxville. I couldn't think of someone who works harder, and it's more deserving of this honor. And we are thrilled, because as you know, women who run the village. It's an honor for the three of us to stand here and congratulate you. We all work together with you, and we have a beautiful supportive family today.
Now, please raise your right hand, little. And she is a good afternoon. I.
I, Cheryl Jeros.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Officer of Sergeant. For the Bronxville Police Department.
For the Bronxville Police Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
She wants to.
Absolutely.
And Cheryl, don't. Don't forget the DM.
I just want to add one thing. This wouldn't be possible if it weren't for Deputy Commissioner John Rowland from the City of White Plains Public Safety. John was the current Deputy Commissioner of the City of White Plains Department of Public Safety. He was the Mount Vernon Police Chief when she joined here, and he called me up and said, "You got to get her out of here." Now, I didn't know if it was just Mount Vernon was changing, or, so there are days we're very thankful for Deputy Commissioner Rowland's recognition. I know why he had to get her out of here. For our final promotion of the evening, Detective Steve Valentin and Commissioner Barrens.
Detective Steve Valentin began his long, forceful career with the City of New York Police Department in June of 2006. He transferred to the Bronxville Police Department, thank goodness, in June of 2010, and he's been in South Park Everston. He has served as a patrol officer, and he's also trained as a youth officer, police investigator, crime scene investigator, and photographer. Jay Blitzen Monroe with his wife Vanessa and their children, Madison and Seaman. Could they come up?
Yes.
Yes.
So can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I.
I, Steve Valentin.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Sergeant.
The duties of the Office of Sergeant.
For the Bronxville Police Department.
For the Bronxville Police Department.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Not included in the file, because he was laid off by the City of White Plains Department of Public Safety prior to Deputy Commissioner Rowland. We're happy for that, but. All right, now that we've done all our new swearing in and our new promotions, we're going to move on to our police awards for the year. You begin. Our first award of the night is going to be to Detective, now Sergeant Valentin, and Detective Sergeant Anderson. Detective Sergeant Anderson has since retired and was unable to make it tonight, but he's named a few of these awards. This is an excellent police duty award. On March 1, 2023, this department received reports of a scam where the subjects distracted the victim and stole her debit card. They later used the ATM card to withdraw thousands of dollars in cash. A thorough and efficient investigation conducted by Detective Valentin and Detective Sergeant Anderson identified the subjects and resulted in those subjects being arrested. For their hard work and determination in tracking down these subjects, these detectives are being presented with the excellent police duty award. Steve, save yourself a trip. Stay up there. Next award is also to Detective Valentin and Detective Sergeant Anderson. Very similar, it's an ATM scam grand larceny. On April 14, 2020, this department received reports of a scam where the subjects distracted the victim and stole his debit card. They later used the ATM card to withdraw almost $9,000 in cash. A thorough and efficient investigation conducted by Detective Valentin and Detective Sergeant Anderson identified the subjects and resulted in the subjects being arrested by this department. For their hard work and determination in tracking down these subjects, the detectives are being presented with the excellent police duty award. You can have a seat, Steve. For our next award, Officer Cooper and Dantini, who were unable, no, you're here, Cooper didn't see it. Officer Jason Cooper, Martin Dantini, Nicole Longo, Justin Sokol, Matt Stein, and Detective Sergeant Anderson. Officer Longo is currently patrolling and protecting us here, so she's. On April 21, 2023, Officer Matthew Stein was flagged down by a victim whose purse was just stolen out of her vehicle. Officer Stein quickly and efficiently communicated all pertinent information to the other officers on patrol. Officers Cooper, Dantini, Longo, and Sokol canvassed the area, located and identified the subject on the Metro North train seconds before the train was about to leave the station. Detective Sergeant Anderson responded to the scene and supervised as Officer Dantini interviewed the subject, who confessed and provided the location of the stolen property. The officers' quick response and teamwork resulted in the arrest of the subject and the return of the victim's property. For their efforts on the date, the officers are being presented with the excellent police duty award. Our next award is going to be for Officer Sokol and Detective Sergeant Anderson. On May 10, 2023, Officer Sokol was performing routine patrol when he observed two males behaving suspiciously in front of the Citibank on Pondfield Road. Officer Sokol stopped and identified the two male subjects as they left the area. An investigation. An investigation by Detective Sergeant Anderson and Officer Sokol, in conjunction with the team from Citibank, led to the identified males being arrested for charges involving the use of fraudulent identifications to deposit stolen and altered checks and then withdrawing the funds from victims' account. For their vigilance and hard work, the officers are being presented with the excellent police duty award. All right, Sokol, you can say it. Our next awards will go to Officer Cooper, Donzo Farid, and Sergeant Vanderloo. On May 16th of 2023, Officer Cooper was performing routine patrol when he observed two males attempting to steal a Range Rover out of a driveway. Officer Cooper communicated the need for additional units and pursued the subjects as they fled the scene. Officer Cooper and Sergeant Vanderloo apprehended one of the males who fled on foot, as Officer Donzo Farid responded and stopped the third subject in a getaway vehicle. For their quick response and efficient teamwork, the officers are being presented with the excellent police duty award. Our next awards will be for Officers Cooper, DeBenedetto, who cannot be here tonight, Officer Sokol, and Detective Gerus. I'm sorry, yes.
And their second child three days ago, so we're a little busy. We'll make sure to recognize him when you come around.
On October 30th, 2023, Officer Cooper was performing routine patrol when he observed a vehicle pass a steady red light. The vehicle refused to comply as Officer Cooper attempted to conduct a stop. Two male occupants fled on foot after crashing the vehicle which was stolen. A short while later, we received reports of a male with a firearm on Craft Avenue. Officers Cooper and DeBenedetto responded and immediately set up a perimeter containing the subject. With the assistance of the Tuckahoe and Eastchester Police Departments, they were able to maintain the perimeter while we sent Officer Cooper and Sokol of the department's emergency response unit to search the parking lot. The suspect was arrested without incident. A thorough investigation by Detective Gerus confirmed the arrested male was the passenger of the stolen vehicle, ruled out the existence of a firearm, and revealed the identity of the driver. For their ability to react quickly under pressure and for their outstanding police work, these officers are being presented with the excellent police duty award. And that concludes our awards ceremony for the evening. Okay, before we turn the room back over to you and shut off the air conditioning, because I know those not in full dress uniform are a little chilly, I'd like to acknowledge a member of the department who started his law enforcement career here in Bronxville by going to the police academy, serving 22 years as a member of the department. See now, like the DM, I have emotional incontinence. So it might take me a while. Started his career as a police officer here in Bronxville. He's one of only three members of the department that started the police academy and stayed here. That would be Officer Kevin Iglesias, myself, and Bart Sandacero. So I have the pleasure and honor of saying that I saw Bart's entire career. He was promoted from police officer to detective. He did an outstanding job as a detective. He was tenacious, he was dedicated, he was trustworthy. And then finished his career as patrol sergeant. His wife is here this evening. Also, you may recognize her as our school crossing guard. And his daughter is here this evening, fresh off her first year at college. So Bart, you've done a tremendous job for me, for the Village of Bronxville, for every merchant, resident, and visitor that came here. You were always available. Every critical incident where I put an all-hands-out call on, being from Eastchester, you were right by my side with guidance and expertise and applying your training to resolve these incidents. So we are going to have a walkout for Sergeant Sandacero on Wednesday at 4:00. I encourage anyone who'd like to come and thank him for his 22 years of service to stop by in front of headquarters as he walks out for the final time. Bart, I'm honored to have worked with you for 22 years, but I'm more pleased to call you a friend.
Totally different board now from when I started, but it's been an honor, it's been a privilege to work here. Met a lot of great people along the way. All the officers I work with now, officers I worked with in the past. Chief, like I said, we've been here all the time. Residents, merchants I've made friends with, stuff is irreplaceable. So, you know, a lot of stuff has changed in law enforcement over the years. But I guess, you know, the way you are as a officer, I tell you guys one thing, it's integral. If you're doing the right thing, nobody's looking. If you're doing the right thing, nobody's looking. Everybody else is looking, the cameras are on you, you're doing the right thing.
Just want a picture to cry.
Mayor, Board of Trustees, that concludes our ceremonies for the evening. I'd like to acknowledge Lieutenant William Carroll, who drove here from Princeton, New Jersey. He's at an FBI training seminar there for the week. And wouldn't miss honoring his team here and drove back from Princeton to be with us tonight. So thanks. There was a rumor I was announcing my retirement, so I know that's one of the reasons he drove back. So I'll take care of the air conditioner, I have to go fix my makeup, so we're done. Thank you.
And thank you, officers, all of you. Thank you. Congratulations. Isn't it? It is striking, yeah. Well, most of them. Peter, whenever you're ready, we'll come back, okay? As I said before, this meeting is our favorite meeting of the year. It's going to be hard to come back down to earth here and talk about blacktop and the mundane. Next on our schedule is my report, and I will make it very brief. First, just want to mention that this month is Gay Pride Month, and we just salute everybody in this community and just want to say that we are all-inclusive and it's just a wonderful month to celebrate everyone. And I am just happy that we have a month like this. So just a little salute to gay pride. Just wanted to tell you the sidewalk sale was, according to our merchants, the best ever because they had two of the best days of the year. They often get caught up in the rain seams to follow our sale. So our merchants were really, really happy. I just wanted to share, I went to this wonderful thing at the school called the Festival of Colors. It's the international group, and they do a run. It's called H-O-L-I, and I believe you do say holy run. And it is a Hindu tradition to celebrate love and spring, and it was wonderful. I just wanted to mention our wonderful laborer, Phil Alfieri, who everybody knows Phil from the back of our refuse truck. Phil retired after 32 years in the village. And he started as a meter repair gentleman and worked his way up. And I saw him, and he told me after his family and friends, and these were his words, his greatest joy was interacting with the people in the village. And he told me he loved his job. And it says a lot about Phil and it says a lot about the folks who live here. So we wish our friend Phil great success in his next chapter. I also wanted to mention the adult school has a bunch of new courses starting. Exercise, cooking, understanding AI. So I encourage you, there's some real summer enrichment going on at our adult school. And then finally, we did, since our last meeting, we lost a wonderful village. 60-year resident Mary Huber. Mary was a library trustee, one of the founding board members of the Historical Conservancy, and our village historian for 12 years. And Mary was responsible for establishing our history room. And I just had to mention because Mary did so very much for this village in her 60 years here. So with that, I will turn to my colleague, trustee Barons.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. The Bronxville Beautification Council is hosting its annual benefit garden party this, sorry, on Sunday, June 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. I encourage everybody to attend as it's their primary fundraiser. And the BBC, as you know, does a tremendous amount of work in our village keeping it beautiful, from flowers and plantings. We're so thankful for all their work and their beautification efforts. And we'd like to make sure everyone knew about the event and go and support it if they are around. The Chamber of Commerce has announced their summer concert series. The kickoff is this coming Thursday on Parkway Road from 5:00 to 9:00. There will be, not to be missed, a car show, which is a greatly, a great event, and they bring cars in from all over. And live music from a band called Logical Pretzel. I have not heard them, but they're the Songs of Steely Dan. And there will be food, drinks, cars, and the great music. So promises to be a fun family night and encourage everybody to attend. Additional concerts are scheduled for July 18th, August 22nd, and September 19th, if you want to mark your calendars. My last announcement is the chief was going to talk about this earlier, but I think with all the excitement, he forgot. The police department is now on social media. They're on Instagram, Facebook, and X, which is formerly known as Twitter. And we encourage everyone to follow them if you are on those social media platforms. They've been posting a lot of great posts about what's going on in the village with respect to the police activity. So it's not a site that's monitored, it's a site more for information. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other trustees have anything they'd like to say?
Just a couple more announcements. June is a very busy month, obviously. This coming Friday, June 14th, at 10:00 a.m., the library is having a ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the opening of the outdoor reading garden. The reading garden is a joint project led by the trustees of the library, trustees of the village, the friends of the Bronxville Public Library, and in support of many, many donors, have been working over a year to make this project possible. It's just a wonderful space for the community. And there'll be the ribbon-cutting at 10:00 a.m., and then a storytime at 11:00 o'clock, and then from 3:00 to 5:00, a big community celebration with cake, bubble man, music crafts, lawn games, and more, which I don't know what more means because it sounds like you've got everything already. So everybody, please try and stop by if you can on the 14th. And just another announcement about the Green Committee is having an open house on Monday, June 17th, from 6:00 to 7:30. And it's going to be at the Villa BXV in their community clubroom. And it's just an opportunity for people to come and meet the other people on the Green Committee, hear what they're doing, you know, ask any questions, see where people can, you know, perhaps contribute their time to these projects that are so worthwhile that the Green Committee does for our village.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had the chance to represent you and the rest of the board at two events in the past week. Most recently, on Sunday, Troop Five of the Boy Scouts of America, based here in Bronxville, held an Eagle Court of Honor for six new Eagle Scouts. I think it was a record class for them. Dev Tarwala, Quentin McCarthy, Hunter Denfeld, Jeffrey Rohr, Andreas Wimmersoff, and Charles Hodeluk. All, I believe, residents of Bronxville, and it was just a privilege really to be there and to honor these young men. Clearly, the Bronxville scouting program, of course, is the Greater Bronxville Community scouting program, it's not just Bronxville, but very vibrant and very nice to see so many people there to congratulate these young men and future leaders on having attained the rank of Eagle Scout. And also, last week, there was Granited Village's annual cocktail reception and fundraiser. The honorees, recipients of the Judge Rockhill Gray Award, were Bronxville's own Marilyn and John Hill. Anyone who's lived in the village for any period of time will be familiar with the Hills and the many ways in which they have contributed to the village over the years. John Hill mentioned one contribution alone, former chairman of the school board. Marilyn Hill, as the mayor referenced earlier, Mary Huber, rolls village historian. Marilyn Hill's contribution to preservation of the village's history as life founder of the Bronxville Historical Conservancy. Her contributions to the village are certainly second to none. It was a well-attended event. But let me just use 20 seconds to throw out a public service announcement for Granited Village, the host of this event. Granited Village is a nonprofit organization that supports ages, adults age 55 and up who want to age in their home and neighborhood that they love. They provide just a wonderful support network and range of services and activities for predominantly our senior citizens and anyone who is getting into the... predominantly our senior citizens and anyone who is getting into the grayer hair department. I'm certainly getting there myself, and who is not familiar with Grammedon Village really should go to their website. They're just a terrific organization. I was looking at their calendar just for the month of June. They have events almost every day, it seems, and they just do great work in the village. So thank you to Grammedon Village, and for those who may not know about its services, definitely worth looking them up on the internet. Just a great organization.
Perfect. All right, I think we go to our village administrator for his monthly report.
Just one item to emphasize for the community. It's that time of the year where we start to ramp up with our summer projects, and that means also coordinating with ConEd for their gas line replacement projects that we limit to the summer months when residents are largely away and traffic is a little less and school is out. So we, once again, appreciate everyone's patience as ConEd replaces their aging gas infrastructure. And as I discussed earlier with all of you, we do send out notices to those impacted neighborhoods, and will continue to do so. Principally, the three upcoming projects include gas line replacement for a portion of Avon from where it ties in at Midland to the, what I call the northerly loop of Park Avenue extending into the village of Tuckahoe. So that entire loop of Park Avenue into Tuckahoe, back out to Avon, it will have a new gas line. And that work is actually going to begin later this week, and work will be weekdays, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then over the course of the summer, we determine if some Saturday work will be necessary. The other gas line replacement project will be the entire loop of Crow's Nest, and I'll reach out to those residents once they get a closer idea of the start date for ConEd, but it won't be until the school year is out. And then also, the gas line on a portion of Palmfield Road from the vicinity of Valley up Sagamore will also be done. So lots of coordination, but we appreciate everyone's patience. We'll provide additional notices for those three areas, and that's all.
Perfect. Okay. All right, then we go on to approval of our minutes. And again, thank you, Mary Ann, they were probably the longest minutes of the year, and they were terrific. I need a motion to approve three sets of minutes from the executive work session meeting of May 13th, from the regular meeting of May 13th, and from the extra, the special meeting we had on May 31st. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you again. And to new business, do we have to do formal resolutions?
Yes, for those two appointments.
Okay, so can I do them together?
Sure.
For our, I would love a motion for Detective Cheryl DeRose to be promoted to Sergeant effective June 10th, and Detective Wilson Valentin promoted to, I think it should be Steve Valentin on our message here, Stephen Valentin promoted to Sergeant effective June 10th.
I'll move it.
All right, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Okay. And then, Mr. Palmer, do you want to talk about, we have one of our great partnerships, again, with our town, where we buy our street resurfacing material together to achieve our, hopefully, a volume discount?
Yes, again, it's that time of year, and yes, the town does prepare and goes out to bid for the resurfacing, and the low bidder this year was Patrillo Contracting, whom we've done a lot of work with before. So if you could just authorize entering into the IMA with the town for retaining Patrillo Contracting as the low bidder for paving for this year, and it was nice to see that those, his prices were quite competitive and less than the prices that were paid last year, so that's a real positive.
Good. That was going to be my question. And then, when the streets are chosen, you'll reach out to all the residents as to when the work commences?
Absolutely. How many streets, Jim, do you anticipate? 10 or so?
I don't know if necessarily that many, but certainly several, and also at least one of our municipal parking lots, too, so.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And of course, as you know, portions of Palmfield.
So do I have a motion to accept the IMA?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Now on to FEMA and flooding.
Yes, so, yes, just for the public certification, so this resolution authorizes retaining J. Robert Folchetti and the services of Paul Peluzio, once again, to assist us with our FEMA flood mitigation grant applications. This is a very complex process. The treasurer and I have weekly meetings with FEMA, and it's the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services that this falls under, and, but we're working through the federal government process of seeking reimbursement for the damages that were declared as a state of emergency by the president back in January for the September 29th, 2023 storm. You'll remember how bad that was. So we're seeking reimbursement of all our damages, DPW overtime, and more importantly, the opportunity to mitigate those areas that suffered the worst damage, including the areas down along Paxton, Lower Milburn, Stone Place. And so it's a work in progress. The efforts of this engineer is well worth it because, again, FEMA process is very complex in terms of documentation and what they require, so if we could just, if you could just.
And they will charge us on an hourly basis, on an as-used basis?
Yes, correct. And just for your edification, also, we are able to get reimbursed for their time. That's one of the expenses.
Can I ask, Jim, are they specialists with FEMA, or could we retain them to help us process other grant applications if there are available opportunities?
Yeah, it just so happens Folchetti is an expert in dealing with FEMA, and if the name sounds familiar, it's because Paul Peluzio, one of the principal engineers, which Folchetti and Associates helped the village obtain the $5 million grant for the school flood project. So it's, anyway, and yes, he assists us with other options.
Okay, so I will move that, and I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, another one of those fun items that the chief poked fun at, but if you could just authorize another, again, what we also try to do over the summer is those areas that are a little bit more impactful. This is authorization of a sanitary sewer repair in Palmfield at the intersection of Locusts. So we're trying to, again, coordinate this over the summer, and we'll do this through our emergency bid that we had with Peter Landy. He provided an estimate of $17,850 for that repair. It's an eight-foot section, again, of sewer repair in Palmfield at the intersection of Locusts.
Okay. Who would like to move that?
I'll move it.
And a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, and the next item is retaining another engineer, and this is Colliers Engineering, and Peter Rizzolo in particular with Colliers Engineering, to continue our efforts to finalize the design on the West Side Circle, those areas that have the yellow stanchions, if you will, the yellow bollards that we had as a temporary configuration to test it. The goal is to finalize those designs and construct the improvements, go out to bid and use Colliers Engineering to assist us with going out to bid and overseeing the construction of that work. And for the public certification, again, it's traffic calming, pedestrian improvements, extending the curbing and the sidewalks at the entrance to Lanham Ridge Square and the side by the tavernry and the exit for the village complex, and, again, reducing the exposure of the pedestrian and the crosswalks, so we look at it as bumpouts. Also providing a small island, island extension for pedestrians looking to cross Parkway Road at the intersection of Palmer just before the circle. That involves the elimination of that left-hand turn, and then also, just before you go under the underpass, also bumping that curbing out a little bit to, again, slow traffic, protect the pedestrian a little bit more. Included with this work, as we discussed in our work session, is also reducing the length of the crosswalk on Palmfield across from the soccer store, if you will, over to Griffin Coogan's Building. It's one of the longer crosswalks, so extending those curves out, again, to slow cars, make the pedestrian more visible, and also increase the size of the island. And then, last but not least, we did ask the engineer while he's doing those improvements to also look at options for what can be done at Park Place and Craft Avenue.
Perfect. I mean, it goes along with our sort of walkability initiative. These are all to make it easier for pedestrians to cross some of our most difficult streets, basically.
Did you mention the grant?
Yes, and, no, thank you, Debbie, Mayor. And, yes, much of this will be funded with the $150,000 grant that was awarded to us last year by Assemblywoman Amy Paul, and of course, as I said, the, I think the state dormitory authority that implements these grants was backed up because Lori had spent, well, there's a lot of paperwork associated with these grants, too, but I thank Lori especially with following up with the state and providing the documentation. So we finally did get the award letter, so now the future expenses are able to be reimbursed. So that was another reason why this was a little bit slower. I know some of the residents on the West Side were anxious to get rid of the stanchions, so.
Yes, they are.
Appreciate their patience. Yeah, sorry.
I will move that. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, and while we're on the subject of flooding, belts and suspenders, we had an opportunity, have an opportunity to purchase another pump. So this will be a pump similar to the one that we currently have deployed over on Duesenberry and Archer. Self-contained unit, has sensors that allows it to be activated automatically. We're real, DPW is real pleased with the operation of the existing one, so this will be deployed as needed, and will also be reimbursable as part of that FEMA program, so it's absolutely worth it. And the price for this pump was $79,295.
Why, did you say where you're going to put it? Did I miss that?
This one will be placed on Hamilton, and we'll swap out the existing pump that's currently on Hamilton now, which requires a manual primer, and it's just not as efficient.
Okay. Who would like to move that?
I'll move that.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, and also, at this time of the year, the treasurer, who's been assigned to complete the justice court records, has completed her examination. These records always have a year lag time, so it is correct in that she was just auditing the justice court accounts for the year ended May 31 of 2023. And she provided the summary sheet. All you're simply doing is acknowledging the completion of the report and authorizing its filing with OCA, the Office of Court Administration. Both justices have reviewed their records. As you know, it's a very active court, and the justice court collected over $925,000 in that fiscal year ending in 2023, most of which was tickets totaling $750,065. And much of that, actually, of course, was the great work of the court and our prosecutor trying to clean up outstanding tickets that were put on pause during the pandemic, if you can believe it. Anyway, so thank you, Lori, as always, for taking on that additional responsibility, which is quite significant.
It is.
Doing all the reconciliations for an entire year for both justices.
Thank you, treasurer.
Thank you.
And I will move that, and who has a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, and with the end of this year, we're requesting, the treasurer is requesting permission to move funding as necessary to close out the '23-'24 fiscal year for those accounts that are over. And what we also do this time of year is you authorize transfers within departments for the '24-'25 year.
Alrighty. I will move that and need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, moving right along. Excuse me, the next item is authorizing the continued retention of our wonderful director of rackets, Matt Evans, who oversees the tennis and the paddle programs. We have an agreement in place with Matt, however, we do have a change in his monthly stipend, if you will, is increasing to $3,000 from $2,500, so I wanted the board's approval on that. So for this upcoming year, effective June 1st, his monthly rate is increasing to $3,000. Now, of course, Matt is not an employee of the village for the public certification. He is an independent contractor, so he provides his own insurance, and that also includes, he provides his own health insurance. So at the end of the day, the village is getting an excellent program. I've heard nothing but real positive feedback on Matt's efforts, so, but you are increasing his monthly stipend to $3,000, and again, that's, he's an independent contractor, and obviously, if he was a full-time employee, that would come with a lot of additional expenses.
When was the last time they adjusted his?
You know what? I believe you increased his stipend also last year, but this year he's had circumstances, many do, that his own, some of his own personal expenses, like health insurance, have gone up, but.
The bulk of his money is made from private lessons and.
Exactly. Right.
Yeah.
Right. And again, this has been a real cost-effective alternative as opposed to having a full-time employee.
So, Jim, does he provide you every year with kind of a summary of court time, clinics, lessons, you know, utilization, tournaments? I'd be very curious to see, you know, across paddle and tennis and pickle, what he's, because I, you know, I've heard so many great things, I'd just love to know, have a better grasp on the numbers of.
You know what? Stephen and I can get you that. Stephen works very closely with Matt. Basically, Stephen and I are the recreation department with Matt. So, yes, you should see, the membership, the tennis program has continued to grow. Matt is out there every day this time of year doing lessons, and then, of course, as you know, the pickleball has also grown, and he's really come up with some creative programs. So we'll get Matt to put together a summary report for you. I think that's very important.
Yeah, and maybe in the fall, after the peak season has died down, having him come in and just talk to us for five minutes might be.
Yeah, I agree.
Mutually beneficial.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good idea. All right, I will move that, and do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Okay. Let's see, what we have left is, oh, of course, this is, as you know, the police department had applied for and received a $173,000 grant from DCJS, the Division of Criminal Justice Services, and that was for surveillance cameras, a license plate reader, and also unmanned aerial vehicles, which are drones. So if you could just authorize that acceptance of that grant.
All right, that's an.
I'll move it.
All right?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Great job to the chief for getting this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Jim and Lori, and whoever helped him, that great job.
Because that was significant. Thank you. Thank you.
Real positive, yeah. I gotta say, again, the police department has really taken advantage of the technology, and you heard that, that theme, that's, in and of itself is.
So I had an affirmative vote, so it passes, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, and then I just have one other item, and that's, we just designated August 2nd as Records Management Day, which means we are closed to the public for that day, so staff can follow the New York State Archives' records retention and disposition schedule as put out by State Archives. And it's just easiest to do that with offices not open to the public, so we try to pick a day when it's a little bit quieter and then have a barbecue at the end of the day. And yes, Mary Ann's reminding me, that means I must retool my desk and try to, I like to keep all my files within reach. I'm still.
One of the worst offenders. Yes, I'll move that Jim cleans his desk on that day. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion passes.
While you still have the microphone, could you just update property taxes when they're due?
Sure. On the first, so tax bills were mailed, and the first installment, the Village doesn't give the opportunity to pay in two installments, and the first installment is due by June 31st. I'm not sure what, oh, July, so it falls over, so it goes to July 1 this year. So the first installment is due July 1 without penalty.
And taxes are also online, and they're posted on May 29 online, and you can open up your account, you can see your tax bill as well, and you can pay your first installment and you can also pay later, which is scheduled for the first payment.
But, right, yeah, very good point, since Lori's not quiet at the mic. We, last year, we did implement the online payment option, so that's another user-friendly alternative for residents.
I think Lori also mentioned installment or. You can pay in advance, like in other words, like let's say you don't want to pay until July 1 because it's the last day, you can schedule it for July 1. Let's say you think you're going to repay for second installment, you can pay it December 3rd, you can pay that in advance as well, last day, you know.
But you've had to pay at least that first, that first half by, by the July 1 date.
Because it is important to note the penalties for delayed payment are New York State mandated. We have nothing to do with the percentage, the dates, when certain percentage kicks in, that all comes from Albany.
And we have no, no ability to waive it.
No, no.
But I guess what the treasurer is saying, perhaps if someone is, you know, away for the winter for some stretch of time, you could make arrangements through your office to schedule payments. Or you can do that a month. Yeah, okay. You can just log on and schedule events, either cancel right there or something, you just need your section to log on.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, trustees, before I open it to our public comment, did we forget anything?
Nothing.
No? Alrighty, I will open it to anyone here, if you could stick to our three minutes and just tell us your name and address, and you can talk on any subject you care to if you come to the microphone. Yes, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and the board. To actually be part of a celebration, it's, oh, yeah, I'm going to get to that, to be part of a celebration, because we're introducing two additional celebrations that we're inviting you to. My name is Sean Meriwether, I'm a resident of Tuckahoe, I live at 14 Westview Avenue.
And I am Samantha Christian, I live, also live in Tuckahoe, 72 Main Street.
And we are here to invite the residents of Bronxville to two events that we're hosting. You're going to go first, you're going to be chronological.
Yes. So I am part of the.
Get closer, get closer to the mic. Yeah, thank you.
Just so everybody can hear you at home, too.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm part of the Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee.
Uh huh.
And what a, June is entirely Freedom Month.
Right.
The Emancipation Proclamation, which made sure that nobody in the United States was allowed to ever be enslaved, ever. So it doesn't, it impacts everybody from that point on, and everybody came together, the Union Army, enslaved and not enslaved, regardless of skin pigment, we all decided that freedom mattered more. And, and that unity is what empowers the freedom for everybody here in America. So Juneteenth, the actual day is June 19th.
Right.
But we're having our Tuckahoe Juneteenth Festival on June 15th at Main Street Park on Marble Dale Road in celebration of Freedom Day, Emancipation Day. And we have plenty of great stuff planned for you, free food, which I know everybody's .
Yeah.
Music, arts and crafts, activities for the kids, gardening, performers, singers, dancers, and actors, we've got a whole set for you. So that's this Saturday, four days from now?
Yeah. And what time?
From noon to 5:00 PM on Main Street Park in Tuckahoe on Marble Dale Road.
Right, okay. We'll get the word out. And, and thank you for sitting through a long meeting to share that with us, because, yes, I appreciate it. And we will share it with the, the residents. I think Mayor Omira told me about it, so, but we'll share it with everyone else.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So continuing the spirit of freedom, a lot of people don't know that Pride Month and pretty much all the civil rights months, Black History Month, Women's History Month, and Pride Month are all inspired by Juneteenth. And they all celebrate freedom in their own way. And so Gay Pride Month actually celebrates freedom of expression, regardless of what gender you identify as or sex you are. You should, you should be free to express yourself however you want, dress how you want, speak how you want, and have any art or music that you want. And that's essentially why it's important for Pride Month, which brings us to the next event we're having on, on June 23rd, Tuckahoe Community Center. It's going to be from 2:00 to 6:00 PM.
Okay.
This is going to be the first pride celebration in Tuckahoe, first annual, first ever, I think, in all of Eastchester. So we're very excited to bring that. We're going to have a day full of events for people of all ages, from arts and crafts to musical performances, including Brian Valdudo, who is going to be our headline event. He is best known for his role as the gay kid at the School of Rock, but he is now an out and proud country and western singer, and he is going to be doing a set. So we welcome everyone. If you want more information, or you want to sponsor, or contribute, or volunteer, because we're also looking for people, you can find out more information at tuckahonenypride.org, or you can email us at tuckahonenypride@gmail.com.
Perfect. And we will also get the word out on that event as well. And again, thank you for coming tonight and.
Congratulations to your first female sergeant.
I know, wasn't that? Yes, thank you, and we appreciate you coming.
If you want more information about Tuckahoe Juneteenth, that you can email us at tuckahoejuneteenth22@gmail.com. You can also send donations there if you choose. We are a nonprofit organization, so you can get tax breaks.
So a little funding would help. Yes, I.
Pride, free food, it's, it's important.
Yes, yeah. Oh, thank you both for coming. We truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to, oh, yes.
Mayor, I just got, Kevin, I was just thinking, you know, we open every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Of course, the closing words are with liberty and justice for all, and it's, it's really great to see citizens who bring that to life. And so, again, just thank you again for, for being here and for organizing these great activities. Thank you.
Yes. Margaret Major, good evening.
Hello, good evening. Margaret Major, Library Trustee and resident on 4 Sussex Ave. And first of all, I wasn't expecting a big gathering tonight, but it was a wonderful event and wonderful to see our police department doing so well and being recognized, so thank you for that, and I am all for the double line initiatives.
Yeah.
And then the second thing, I want to thank trustee Knapp for mentioning our ribbon cutting and opening of the patio on Friday at 10:00 AM. It actually opened today, as far as the back door is now open, and patrons are walking on the patio, and almost immediately, we had someone sit down and eat lunch. On one of the benches, they're absolutely stunning, stunningly beautiful, so the patio is already off and running and a big hit with our patrons and residents. So we want to thank you for your support on that initiative, and we look forward to seeing all of you, or some of you, as many of you that can be there on Friday at 10:00 AM. I also wanted to let you know that we will have New York State and County representation. George Lattimer, James Nolan, Amy Paulin, and Shelley Mayer have all confirmed that they'll be there.
Lots of speeches.
Only Amy is making a speech. Only Amy is going to be speaking, and that's because Amy Paulin was a significant and early, as soon as we asked her, she said yes, and has supported the patio with a SAM grant of $125,000. So we're delighted to have her, her be with us, as well as everyone else, too. So, so that was that. And then as far as 4 Sussex Ave, I want to thank you as a resident of 4 Sussex for improving and doing everything you can to improve the communication about the drainage improvement project, and to let you know that all of us at Hamilton and Sussex look forward to that project starting as soon as possible. So hopefully in July, that's what we're hoping, so, okay? So just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Anyone else like to speak on any subject? Hello? Good.
Sarah Kenny, 15 Mainwood. I am also a board member of Bronxville, but I am here. I saw tennis on the agenda, I'm here as a Bronxville boys' mom, tennis team parent, not, and I saw tennis on the agenda, I wasn't sure what it was in reference to, but Helen Knapp made the point of seeing what the schedule looks like with the pro, and while it's wonderful that Bronxville has a tennis pro, I was wondering if you could consider some more time being carved out to our girls' state champions and our boys' state champions on the courts after school for our athletes. We found out we only had two courts this season, and there's 16 athletes, and so it's eight on a court. There is no club in the area, my son plays for singles, there's no club in the area that would ever put eight athletes on a court, each team, the JV and varsity, each practice for one hour each. Most of our athletes practice for an hour and a half on our fields. To have eight on a court for one hour is pointless. So here, Coach Klerfeld sends six of our top players to train at their facilities because we just don't have the facilities. And when I talk tennis.
Did you have, did you have additional courts before? Are you, have you been reduced down to two?
I thought we used to have three courts, and now we have two. So we use the three hard courts. The two clay courts are not prepared. Sometimes it is a weather issue, but the clay courts for the boys' season in the spring are not ready. So if Matt is teaching a lesson, he's got to use the third hard court, and we only have two courts. And we're also, to host home matches, you need three courts. You have two singles matches, three doubles matches, so you can kind of make do, you can stagger. I mean, it'd be great if you had five courts, but if you have, you can put, you know, three on, and then the other two need to wait, which is totally fine. But with two courts, it's not fair to stagger three matches. So most of, from April 25th on, all of our matches, we hosted two home matches, we're able to get the field club for some, it rained, so those were canceled, and all of our matches were away. And thankfully, we had some bussing this year, so we didn't have to ask parents at the last minute to drive. But I believe at the interest meeting for the girls with the wonderful outcomes of both the girls' and the boys' team, 50 girls show up this last week for the interest meeting, which could add another team, which can add a modified team. We don't have a middle school team, we only have high school teams, because we don't have the facilities to train these kids. So it's a little bit unfortunate, and I'm just asking you to consider when you're looking at Matt's hours and when he trains and when his private lessons are, if there's any way that you can consider us using the third court for our, I mean, two hours is very generous if we had the court, three hours would be ideal, just because it's not fair that this team is separated every day with practices. Our leaders of our teams, our captains of our teams aren't training with the other players, because the coach is training the kids who don't train elsewhere and that need the time and need the court time with him. So for our team, for the school, and we're just asking that you consider looking at the fall. And, and just to be clear, the fall season, the clay courts are prepared, because they've been used all summer, so that you, he has more ability to have a private lesson in the fall as opposed to the spring. So anyway, we had our celebration on Friday, and I knew a couple of parents wanted to address this with all of you, and when I saw tennis on the agenda tonight, I thought it'd be a good opportunity to ask that you consider. And again, I was very happy to be here tonight and celebrate, our police officer is very supportive of them and all of you, and I appreciate your time, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
No, can I ask, have you had a chance to talk to Matt directly about this? Is this something that he's aware of as a concern?
He is aware of it. We have talked to Coach Klerfeld, who is, who is retiring at the end of this year, 29 years at the school. He has addressed it with Steve. So as a parent, we never want it to go above the coach. I think this has already been addressed this season as well, but Steve tried, you know, he under, Coach Klerfeld understands that Matt's trying to run a business, too, but he doesn't feel like as, you may be able, can Joe Haven come join us?
Joe, sure.
Do you know any more on the communication with Matt?
You're right on.
But do you, has there been communication with Steve and Matt with?
Yeah, we met last year, we had one time about it, but for this particular spring, Steve has been doing all the communication.
He did all the communication with. I know we had had, I know Coach Klerfeld had requested more court time, at least to have a couple more home matches, and we just didn't have any. And again, these, we've won three state champions in two years with the girls and the boys, I just.
Maybe, I'm thinking, going forward, you could, the school, maybe Joe, you could send us over kind of what would be, like, the ideal for you and the dates of when you would like things, and then we could work off of a little bit of a template of, of what you would like, maybe more time, more court, what dates, and then, and then we can just, because we're, as you know, we're total partners with the school.
Yes, we, speaking as a board member, we are very grateful and thankful for our partnership, but as a parent with this team, you would just like to see them practice together and putting, it's futile to put eight tennis players on one court. You get nothing accomplished, and it is, spring is a very, very short season. It starts in mid-April, playoffs start at the end of May, so it's like five, six weeks. It's not a lot of time for the boys. I think fall could be a little bit longer, but I don't know if there's something that we can work out that would.
Okay, but maybe if you would send us over kind of a, a little bit of a template, a wish list, and then we can all work off of the same information, and we'll work together.
Yeah, and to the extent, we passed a resolution earlier today relating to, to Matt Evans, and you'll presumably be talking to him, maybe you could also suggest that, you know, obviously, we want to hear everyone's views, but it seems that the people who are the tennis people and the Rackets people should be talking to each other in the first instance.
Yeah, I had to say, we, we do, and we, it takes, it takes a lot of coordination. It is a challenge, and Stephen and Matt work on it and trying to arrange the schedules. Frankly, we've tried to also help the school with, you know, some other locations at times when you can't always, can't always work it out. Unfortunately, we, people love the clay courts, the clay courts are wonderful, but they do add a challenge in the spring, in most springs, because we just can't get them prepared in time. So it is, it is that issue of, but I think our, our Director of Rackets is flexible, and there were some very important challenges and, or some important matches, and Matt was prepared to give up his time. was prepared to give up his time, I think, as it turned out. What the school tries to do is change the home games and the away games, so it's, it's a lot of coordination, but we'll keep working on it. Got it.
Absolutely. And again, thank you for staying so long. We appreciate it. Yeah. Anyone else on any topic? No? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to end this month's meeting?
So moved.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll see everyone, what is our...
July 8.
July 8 is our next date. And thank you all for coming and staying. Appreciate it.